Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, November 28. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Chanset. Sulfah.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Meeman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Sarun. Vocal singer.
Tony and Nick were not going to be here. And Dan will be here pending a little bit later online. And then a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for the broadcast and recording for tonight. And then item three is items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything?
No.
Okay. And then we will move right on to... Did we notice the public hearing at 7:05 or... Okay. Well, then we'll wait for that for a second. We'll go to matters from the public for anything not on the agenda tonight. See anybody here for that? Yeah, we'll wait for two minutes.
Resolution.
We could knock out one of them. Why don't we just drop down to... Yeah, we can do seven. The authorizing the adoption of the ADA transition plan. Currie's going to come up and address this for us.
Rahat and Chris worked together on this, and Chris prepared the memo. So I'll just... Rahat's not here tonight, but I'll present it on their behalf. As Chris indicated in his memo, in accordance with the Public Rights of Way Accessibility Guidelines, or PROWEG, every city is mandated to develop an ADA transition plan and adopt that plan. And those guidelines specifically pertain to modifications and enhancements to pedestrian facilities within the right of way, basically to make them ADA compliant. So as the city performs projects, if we have a broken curb and we have to repair that curb, then everything associated with that curb, any adjacent sidewalk, slopes, those are all brought up to ADA standards. If we have a broken sidewalk, again, everything gets brought up to ADA standards. So as we do things, we make sure that everything is replaced back to ADA standards. As part of this process, the city did have to go out and survey to determine our existing compliance. And I had that page dog ear here, but now it's, of course, gone. The percentages, here we go. I'm not going to run through them all, but it's on Appendix D of the document. And you can see that overall, the city is really very compliant today. We've, over the years, put a lot of money into ADA accessibility issues. Certainly, we still have improvements to make, as does every community. And that's the point of the requirement for us to adopt this, is to commit and be obligated to make ADA improvements whenever we do other projects. So we are recommending approval of Resolution 23-132-R, which would authorize the adoption of the ADA transition plan.
Does anybody have any questions about this one? I think it's really good, too, that we have this, because I think this plan will dovetail in with any of the safe routes to school or any of the other...
Bicycle and pedestrian plan, our annual roadway maintenance program. This plan is overarching of all the city's infrastructure work.
That's important, too, is maybe when we look for other ways to fund things, that when that plan is already there and accessible and used for, you know, all those things, makes perfect sense.
Chris mentioned it here, too, and I failed to mention that to you as part of my presentation, was by having this plan in place, it's yet one more thing that we have on our checklist towards getting grants.
Yeah. There are no other questions. I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 23-132-R, authorizing the adoption of the ADA transition plan.
And?
Motion by Wolf, second by Vocal Singer. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Put that on regular... Or put that on consent agenda for Monday night. Thank you. All right, now that we are past 7:05, we will go back for our public hearing on our main tax levy. That is open. And do we want to treat these as separate public hearings, Peggy?
Yes.
Yes, okay. That's what I thought.
Peggy, are you able to... Oh, you know what? Dan Chanset isn't online yet, so you don't have to share it through the Zoom yet.
Did you open the public hearing?
Yes, it is open.
Okay. We will open it for questions from the public if there are any, but I have a short presentation here, just a few slides to go over the highlights of the tax levy. So this is the 2023 tax levy collected in 2024. We have a projected EAV of 1.3 billion, a levy amount of 9.3 million, and a rate of .7268. We had a rate of .73 this year, so if all of the numbers come out, it will be a slight decrease in the rate. We never know exactly what the EAV will be, because there's still adjustments being made right up until they do the extensions. This is how the... Just a breakdown from the ordinance with the budget amount and breakdown by line item for each levy item. And then this is a chart showing the approximate amount that a taxpayer would pay to the city of Batavia. If they were in a $300,000 home, they would pay $683 for the year for all city services. And that is, using this rate, is a slight decrease with $694 last year. And that is all I have. I don't know if there were any questions from the council for me or before you turn it over to the public.
I just want to make the observation that the Batavia rate is probably one of the very lowest in the area as far as municipal taxes. There's one of our neighbors that's $2.11 for their city rate, or at least it was last year. And so we're really on the low end. I have people ask me about... Other mayors and that ask me quite often how we're able to do this. And I say, "Well, we got a great staff that keeps a track of everything."
It is a very good rate that pays for all of the snow plowing and police and fire protection services, as well as several other city services.
What do you online tonight that has any questions, anything? Okay. Anybody in the audience have any questions? Okay. Then I need a motion to close the public hearing on the main levy.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Sulfah, second by Youer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Now we will open the public hearing for SSA number 42 tax levy.
I don't have a presentation on this, but this is the very first tax levy for the Nagel area, and it is for stormwater detention. And we are required to have a public hearing for the first levy of SSA. I would point out that we did have a slight typo in the original ordinance. It said the budget was $11,050. It was actually $11,350. And then the levy amount is $5,100. So it's a small amount, but also paid for by the parcels in that SSA.
And that's for maintenance on the water retention...
Yes.
...detention basin out there. Okay. Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay, and I will close. I need a motion to close the public hearing then.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Sulfah, second by Youer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Okay, passes. And then we will go to item number eight, which is Ordinance 2362, Regarding Paid Leave for All Workers Act. Wendy will come up and enlighten us on this.
Good evening. Earlier this year, the state legislature passed the Paid Leave for All Workers Act, and recently Governor Pritzker signed it into law, making it effective January 1, 2024. Just in a very basic, high-level summary of the act, it requires employers to provide all... For one hour of paid time off for every 40 hours worked. Under the act, the employee is not required to provide a reason for documentation... A reason or documentation for using the 40 hours of paid time off, and the time off cannot be denied by the employer. The law applies to all full-time, part-time, seasonal, as well as temporary and internship positions. One of the main concerns of the act is that employees may use, like I mentioned, up to 40 hours of paid time off without providing a reason, and the time off cannot be denied by the employer. Hypothetically, that would mean that the same week... In the same week, an entire shift of police officers, firefighters, public works employees, or city hall staff could request that week off, and the city could not do anything to stop that from happening. In the interest of community public safety and maintain continuous city operations, it is recommended that the city exclude itself from the coverage. Under Home Rule, we have the authority to opt out of this act. The one thing I... With that being said, I would point out that currently, under our paid leave policies, we provide benefits greater than what the act requires. And so in the memo I listed, I won't go through all of them. I listed all of the different groups and what is allowed. The only two groups that we do not provide paid leave for, and I just want to... Just as far as under the act that would be required, is our pay-down call firefighters, as well as our seasonal and intern positions. And I would just like to point out, we took a look at that and explored that and thought, you know, is there something that we should do? But in regards to our pay-down call firefighters, currently, right now, how that works is they bid for shifts. They're only required to work a certain amount of shifts per month, and they have the ability to navigate their schedule as needed. So if they don't want to work a day, then they just don't sign up for it. And as you can imagine, if we had paid leave with that, then we would have a person signing up for a shift, as well as saying they're not going to be here. So it could end up being fairly pretty complicated and extensive overtime. The other thing in regards to our seasonal group, as a city, we don't have extended, long-term seasonal employees. We just use seasonal primarily in the summer months for our PPS group and/or water and/or our streets group. They usually work about three months, and many times they're college students or people in that group. And we've been very flexible in understanding as far as what their schedule and allowing them time off as needed throughout the summer months. So with that, attached is the ordinance, which allows us to opt out of the paid leave. The requirement is... The only requirement that the state states is that if we're going to opt out, we have to do it before January 1. And so that's before you today to opt out. I can answer any questions?
Questions?
I just wanted to add a few things on to that. There are groups that are currently exempted under the act. It is park districts and school districts as well.
It's park districts, school districts, and they're saying perhaps some county public works departments, but...
And so the Illinois Municipal League, since this act has been enacted, has been working hard to discuss this with legislators and also with the union groups that were in support of this, to say, you know, the issues that are present for school districts and park districts, it's the same thing for municipalities, if not more so, as this affects public safety and first responders, to include public works departments who need to have appropriate manning to respond to crisis conditions and can't suffer a, you know, a mass reduction in force in a department that would prevent them from properly responding to those situations. So IML, at this point, has not been successful in seeking a change, but it is on the topics that they are going to pursue in the next legislative session. But this act goes into place January 1, so that's why it's necessary to take this action now.
I totally understand that from a staffing point, that that could be a real problem. And we spend so much time and effort, Wendy does, trying to get the contracts worked out with the union so that that doesn't happen with the way that leave is set up and time off is set up now, so that they don't have to deal with that. So this would just add that right back into the mix if we had to abide by that.
And I've also reached out to all of our state elected officials to say that we would love for them to pursue the change to exempt municipal employers, although we have the opportunity as a Home Rule community. There are many non-Home Rule communities to which this would apply.
Jen?
So, you know, if we do go vote this, you know, vote not to have this, do we have an opportunity in the future to bring it back up and have that conversation and reinstate it if we deem it necessary because of our status?
Absolutely. It's just what's required to opt out is an ordinance. We could obviously revoke or change that ordinance at any time.
Yeah.
And we're opting out for our... The entirety of our staff, right? It's not just...
Yeah.
We can't just make selective groups.
No, unfortunately not.
That would present a huge problem with unions. I don't think they would like that, depending on who we pick not to be part of it.
The only thing that I would say is to kind of keep a pulse on our interns, to see if this may begin to affect the interns that we have. I mean, as you describe, I don't want to say that, you know, I would just say keep a pulse on and see how that may affect it, because that would probably be the biggest one.
Absolutely. And it wouldn't necessarily... If for some reason we decided... It would just be a policy change. So say, as a city, we decided to provide benefits to an intern. Once we've opted out of this, it's just a matter of I would change our vacation and our sick policy to include them as having a benefit. So it wouldn't necessarily change the fact that... Probably, I would say, the biggest, if you were to say heartburn in this act, is the fact of that they can... People can take time off at any time without any recourse, and that's really the biggest issue. The other pieces of it of giving people time isn't necessarily that, you know, we give amounts larger than what's being required for almost all of the groups. It's more that piece of it. So, yeah, if at any point we decided that our interns and/or our seasonal, we wanted to give them some additional paid time off benefit, it's just a matter of changing our policy.
I will make the motion that we recommend to council Ordinance 2362, Regarding Paid Leave for All Workers Act.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Lancy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. All right, then we will move on to item number nine, which is the Resolution 23-123-R, the 2024 annual budget.
I'm just going to sit here if that's okay.
That's fine. We're not going to make you move.
So there have been no changes made to the budget. I don't know if you wanted to have any further discussions tonight or had further questions?
Do you have any more comments or questions on...
I think it's all been very well laid out, and it looks good to me.
We've had good discussions about it. We've changed what we've changed, and that's where we're at. And we're using our reserves instead of raising taxes. Has to be said.
With the... I mean, with the caveat that we discussed it, but just to point out again, this is just a projection. It doesn't mean the reserves are actually going to be used.
Right.
It might not be used at all.
Yeah.
But it's budgeted in there just in case. Like, in the past, when it's been budgeted, all those reserves have not been used in the past, so just so everybody's aware of that.
Okay, then I would ask then that you have a motion. I don't know if the amount of the budget was included with the... I don't see it up there, but it's $157,66,955.
Can you repeat that for me again? I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Sulfah, second by Youer. Let's just do a roll call on that one.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chanset. Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Meeman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Sarun. Vocal singer.
Aye.
And then we'll move on to item number 10, which is Ordinance 2352, the 2023 tax levy that we just had the public hearing for. I get a motion to recommend that to council? Okay, I'll make the motion that I recommend it to council.
Second.
Okay, motion by Wolf, second by Youer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Okay, motion carries.
Those items, the tax levies, all of them cannot go on the consent agenda because they have to be after the budget, just to point that out.
Okay.
The budget has to pass before they can be passed.
Right, so the budget will be first on the agenda on Monday night, and then the rest of those levies will be after that. All right, then on to item 11, which is Ordinance 2353 for SSA 30 tax levy. And which one is...
That's for Prairie Trail South for stormwater detention.
I'll make the motion that we recommend that to council.
Second.
Second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Then on to Ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy. And which one is that?
That was the Nagel.
Nagel, okay, that's Nagels. I'll recommend that to council.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
Speak up, Abby. I can hear you over there. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. And then item 13 is Resolution 2355, SSA 62 tax levy.
That is for the downtown levy.
Okay. It's the money that the city contributes for Main Street.
Correct.
Just so that that gets said. And I'll recommend that... Motion to that to council.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. All right, then on to item 14, which is Resolution 23-131-R, Authorization to Contract for Collection Services. And I make sure everybody saw that there was an email about that today to explain what didn't get attached to that before. And this is one that we always talk... In the past, we've talked about that, you know, do we make money on this by sending the stuff out to get it collected, or do we end up paying more money than what we make on it? And I think, isn't it paid back on a percentage of what's...
Right. They only receive money if they actually collect something.
Right. Does anybody have any questions on that? If not, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 23-131-R, Authorization to Contract for Collection Services.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Item 15, Resolution 23-134-R, Authorization for Network Switch Purchase. And Todd is here tonight to explain this one, too.
Good evening. Howard Chason is out of town, so I'm here. For those that don't know me, I'm Todd Davis, the Assistant IT Director. So the IT department put out an RFP for a total of 34 network switches that we need to replace. That breaks out into 12 of which are for the water and wastewater operational network. The other 22 are what we'd call city switches, the day-to-day operation of the city facilities, so the networking for that. Network switches, what they do is they connect all of our desktops, phones, cameras, wireless access points, you name it, all tie together into a network so the information can travel around, connects us to the Internet, and so on and so forth. So we put out a bid for that. We got four bids back. The lowest bid came from CDW Government Division. It's all Cisco equipment. We have... Our electric network is also Cisco. We have a Cisco phone system. Most of the city network today is Cisco, so we have a pre-established setup here with Cisco. It's probably going to be easiest for us to implement new switches if we continue to stay with Cisco. Realizing Cisco is kind of the big player in that industry, what we did is we very intentionally put together a very large bid package. 30... 34 switches is a lot to buy at one point in time, but we found the bigger... The purchase is the bigger discount we get from Cisco. We wound up getting the lowest bid, represented a roughly 60% to 65% discount off of MSRP. So we were very happy with that. This whole purchase actually fits into what we put in the 2023 budget, so...
What's going to be my question was, is how much below the budget amount was this?
I understand it's very close to the budget amount, actually. So, yeah, we didn't come in much under budget, but we got it in there.
Over budget.
No, we're not over budget.
Okay.
That's actually a good point. I was going to say, because I was asking Alderman Youer about it earlier, just wanted to make sure it was budgeted, right? I thought it would be budgeted, but that would be awesome if in a document like this it could say, "Budget was 300 grand. We're going to spend 251." You know, it's like, "Hooray." Or if it's 10 grand off, "Okay, no big deal." You know, 60 grand off, we should probably talk about it, you know, whatever it is. So I think that would help.
We are looking at a different format for our memos to council, and so we can certainly take that.
And anyone from the public, too, is looking at it.
Yeah, absolutely.
That way, it's just transparent, bam, look, we're doing a good job, whatever, you know.
Usually, there's two reasons they're bringing it. Either it's way on your budget, or it's over budget.
Right.
And you get those numbers thrown back to us.
And when it's just right in there, we...
Right, yeah.
No, I think it's a solid number for the switches. I mean, Cisco's not the cheapest in the world, but I wouldn't want to switch from it now, so...
Right. Thank you.
I would say the same thing that Tim said. I mean, Cisco is unfortunately overpriced, but when you have... When your environment is that way, having a mixed environment and then having to learn different technology, they're just not... They're not the same. You go to HP or anything else, it's totally different. So that causes them to actually want another person to...
And we don't need that. Didn't want to have to go there, but no.
And we don't have to pay benefits to hardware and stuff like that, so it's a wise choice, so...
I think if it fits and dovetails with the systems that we have, and, you know, especially security-wise, that it's supported and updatable, so that, you know, we're not doing this every other year with stuff like this. It's been quite a while since I think we made a switch purchase.
Been a long time. The last time we bought any... We bought a large percentage of the city switches, I would say around 2016 was when we did that. And then the water switches are much older than that, so those are in need of replacement, for sure.
Eight to 15 years for the general public is a very long time for network switches. That's two technology cycles, if not three, so...
Absolutely, we're able to keep them...
You made good use of them.
We try. We keep that stuff as long as we possibly can.
Fantastic.
You know, a lot of the switches we have are, you know, on Cisco, it's at their end of sale already, but, you know, we definitely want to get these replaced before they go end of support. But yes, we are not turning this stuff around like a typical three-year type of cycle. We keep it as long as we can.
We'll get them all out of the boxes and installed next year, right?
They're actually telling us that lead time on these could be as short as maybe three, four weeks.
Wow.
So we're hoping that they start rolling in the door just before the end of the year.
You guys are busy.
Yes.
Busier.
That's because all these done, buying out all their...
All the other stuff, yeah.
We did cause a problem.
I looked at it, looks like the network switch is 380,000.
Is the...
380,000, if I'm reading the budget correctly.
300,000, yes, so that's good. Okay, any other questions? Comments? Okay. I will make the motion that we recommend Resolution 23-134-R, Authorization for Network Switch Purchase.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Youer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Posed? Thank you.
I'll say 2023 is 260,000, they have 120 for this year. For 2024.
Then we will move on to item 16, which is project status. Laura?
Well, in the interest of time this evening, because we have our four candidates who are here this evening for the vacancy of the Ward 7 Aldermen, I'll just make sure that everybody is aware that this Thursday, November 30th, there will be a meeting here, which is a public open house to review our downtown plan. And the room will be set up with multiple storyboards that come from the plan itself, an opportunity to walk around and talk with members of our Community and Economic Development Department, as well as the consultants who assisted us with creating that plan. It is, it's very comprehensive and, but we'll be there to answer any questions that people have about that. That's November 30th. It's from 6:30 to 8:30 right here in council chambers. And then lastly, I just wanted to give kudos to our Streets Department, who has been extremely flexible over the last week, considering that they were able to pivot from the leaf collection to doing snow plowing, and then back to leaf collection. It is not an easy thing to change that vehicle over from one function to another, and I just think that they did a really great job of that, so thank you to them.
Alan, I got one more.
Okay.
Just so everybody in the council understands what's going on, probably this year are going to have one of the best Christmas decorations we've ever had in the community, and a lot of it was dedicated the other night when we had Santa Claus arrive, and we had all kinds of stuff down here on Sunday afternoon. We're missing one very interesting component of it, though, and that's the Christmas tree that has stood on the island in the middle of the Wilson, when you look from the south of the Wilson Street Bridge, there's always a Christmas tree on the island down there as you look. Well, as of tonight, the Christmas tree is not lit there yet, and the problem we've run into is, is that they needed to, what was the word you used?
The timer is broken.
The timer has gone bad on it.
Is it still not on? It was on as of 5 o'clock this afternoon.
Oh, I didn't look, I'm sorry.
They replaced it today.
Okay, yeah. Because we had to fix it today, yeah.
Okay, well, anyway, I just wanted you to know, it's going to be on, and I really thank our Public Works for jumping into it when they found out that the timer was burned out, that they quickly got a new one and got everything all changed about. That is a very interesting historical kind of tradition down there. That started by some boys that were involved in the American Legion during World War I, and they wanted to do something that sent a tribute to the soldiers from Batavia who were then over in Germany fighting World War I. And it was well received, and so then, they kept it going every year, and then in World War II, there were a number of people from Batavia that went off under both areas of that, and again, the trees were always lit during the, every year during the war. And in the 19, early 1960s, one night, we had some people come down and wanted to know why that tree had to be out there. And we had some Aldermen on the city council at the time who were veterans of World War II. Oh my goodness gracious, they led into those folks like you wouldn't believe about how they laid in trenches in Germany, and on Christmas, they thought of that beautiful tree in the middle of the Fox River and whatever. So then one Alderman made the motion, I'm sure it's back in the records, that we will always keep those, that tree lit in Christmas time, and it's become the community stalwart commitment to veterans and our service to our country. So that's why it's there, and I'm pleased to report that I guess it's on now, and it's going to be for the rest of the Christmas season, so. The other night, when we were lighting the big tree out here and all this other, I had several citizens say, why isn't the light on on the tree down south of the bridge? And I said, well, I think we've got technical issues, but we will get it on, and so it is on now, and I just, in case any of you received any inquiries from your constituents about why that tree isn't on, I guess it is on now. So thank you, Gary, and pass my best wishes on to the electric and your folks for rising to the occasion very quickly and getting that corrected.
Okay. Now I guess we get to move on to other. Does anyone have any others? Has Dan checked in yet or not? Okay. All right, hearing no others, we will then move on to our marquee item tonight, our interviews of the four candidates for the vacancy in the 7th Ward. So at this point, how do we want to situate people? Are we just going to come up to the podium one at a time?
Yeah, maybe if everybody could kind of sit toward the front, in the front row here, and then alternately come up to the podium to answer.
Adjust the microphone as you come up to.
Perfect, thank you.
And Laura and I talked about this earlier last week, about how we would try to, with four candidates here, make this manageable tonight, and try to boil it down to a couple of questions that we thought were decent. We got some other input from several of you on the council, so I think we'll probably use, I think there's five or six questions that we got out of that, so I think we'll be okay there. I guess to start with, I'd probably ask each one of you to come up, just quickly give us a little bit of background about you, and we've read what you've turned in, but it's always good to hear right from you. And then, you know, keep that to a couple of minutes, so we can get through that, and then we'll go through the questions one at a time and have each, each one of you come up and answer that. And then we get to go in the back and cogitate a few minutes on it, figure out how we want to do it, and then we'll go through our procedure that we've used in the past, we'll make our, you know, selection, and then we'll come back and let you know who we picked. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you for, all four of you, for showing up tonight and, you know, expressing interest in this, and I'm really happy that we have more, more people than what we would need, and I really like the fact that people want to be involved in this. There's been times when it's been, there hasn't been as much interest in it, so I'm glad that that's where we are this time. Okay, just randomly, I'm going to start off with Robin, if you want to come up and come up to the podium, and your opening statement.
Okay.
All right.
Hello.
Don't make that easy.
Robin Barazza, and I live on the west side of Batavia. I've been a Batavia resident for about, almost seven years now. I have two kids that are, one who just finished the Batavia Public School, with the Batavia Public School District, and currently have a student at Batavia High School. I, you want to know a little bit about my background, or just kind of a general?
Whatever you'd like to talk about for.
All right. I just, my professional background is in public education. I was in public education for about 20 years. I'm currently a small business owner. I also currently am the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission for City of Batavia, and have been on that commission for about three years now. I'm definitely interested in moving forward with being part of the decision-making in Batavia as we look toward a period of growth, and we have all the challenges that come with it. I won't take any more time, then, thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next would be Bob. Kiekefer.
Adjust the microphone a little bit. I'm Bob Kiekefer. I've lived in Batavia now for about 18 years, and I just love it here. I think this is, I've lived a lot of places, this is the best of them. I love the sense of community, I love how people get together with each other to solve problems and to move the city forward. And I'm at a time in my life now, when I have time, I have the energy, I have the enthusiasm, that I think I can contribute to that and maybe help things move along. I am, I think, qualified. I've been involved in government practically all my life, one way or the other, mostly through reporting on it for a couple of news organizations, but in, I come from a political family, and we could talk more about that later if you want. I'm a hard worker, I'm dependable, I come to you with no agenda in particular, except to move the city forward, keep it going forward, make things even better than they are now. I'm friendly, I keep a smile on my face, and I promise that if you honor me with your vote, you won't be sorry you did, you'll be glad you did. And I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Next would be Kirk Kilker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kirk. I live in Batavia on the west side. I've been here for 21 years. My wife and I have 37 years moved in, raised our two kids here, both went to school. My daughter and two grandkids now have moved back to Batavia. My son is looking for a house here, so if you have any suggestions, let me know, because he's looking very hard at this point in time. Just a little bit about my career, I spent 36 years with Liberty Mutual Insurance Company two and a half years ago, even though I wasn't thinking about it, they offered me an early retirement. Actually, thought about it for about 30 seconds and took it. And currently just focused on things that I'm passionate about. So I am a, the Events Coordinator at Batavia Moose Lodge, put a lot together there, fundraising events, things like that. I'm also the Chairman of the Board for Batavia Covenant Preschool, which is our church, and I'm passionate about that as well. And in addition to that, I own a small business called Chicagoland Brews Cruise, which helps me with my passion for local beer and craft beer. So those are the things I'm doing right now. This would be, Batavia is another passion of mine, so I saw this opportunity and wanted to go ahead and give it a shot. So I appreciate your, your time and allowing me to be here. Thanks.
Carrie Badgley.
All right, so I'm Carrie Badgley. I moved to Batavia, I guess about nine years now, when I was finishing up my PhD in physics. So I had two requirements where I was going to move, and that needed to be close to Fermilab, since that's where I work, and also it needed to have good schools. So I had Geneva and Batavia on my list, and Batavia won out. And I moved a lot as a child, and so I promised my two children, who were in elementary and middle school at the time, that I wouldn't move them out of the district for school. I would let them stay here. So my daughter recently graduated, that choice of schools worked out, she's pre-med at Northwestern, so all my kids are out of school now, but I don't want to move. I'm happy in Batavia, I plan on being here long-term, and that's kind of why I've gotten more interested in, you know, this position. So I don't have experience in, in government, but I do have a lot of experience in, in running larger projects and in being a department head now at Fermilab. So one of the things that was mentioned tonight was the network switches. So my budget in my department's not as big, but we also have end-of-life network switch issues, and I had to make a decision on which ones we were replacing this year, and which ones we can put off, and things like that. So I'm familiar with, with having to deal with budgets, having to deal with hard decisions, and I also don't have an issue with people yelling at me. I can separate the emotion from, you know, I don't take it personally, I can tell that they're passionate about whatever topic, but it's not, it's not really against me. So I guess that, and I've, the things I really love about Batavia are the river, and I've really gotten into biking and running and enjoying the river. I came from Texas where water was scarce, so something I really appreciate here, so I guess that's it.
Thank you. Okay, now I think we'll maybe mix the order up a little bit here, and I will move on to a couple of the questions that we came up with for you tonight. So I think we'll start out with, I know some of this has already been talked about, but what skills, experience, or other qualifications make you good for the position of Alderman? If you want to elaborate a little bit on that, and we'll start off with Bob.
Always fun to go first in responding to the questions. I, I feel that after X number of years, 50 or so, covering state government as a reporter, participating in it through the political process, and watching all of you, among other things, I really do have a feeling for how government works. I was a political science major in college and learned the theory of government, and by watching it as a reporter, I learned how it really works, and kind of unlearned what I learned in college. When I was working for United Press International, I worked my way up through Bureau Manager in Springfield, where I covered state government full-time and lived there for seven years. I came back to Chicago in 1977 as the Illinois editor and ran the entire news operation. It's a, at that time, it was a million-dollar operation a year with staff of about 20, and managed that pretty well. We did very well in competitive situations against the Associated Press, and a lot of good stories about those days. My wife and I have been involved in a lot of community projects around Batavia. I have recently joined the Fireworks Committee, and I'm, it might be too late to sign up for our fundraiser coming up on the 2nd, but we'll be seeing you for contributions, I'm sure for that. So I feel like I have a professional understanding and appreciation for government, I feel like I have experience in managing projects and business, and I feel like I have a real commitment for the city of Batavia, and I'll leave it at that.
Next would be Kirk.
Sure, I'll talk a little bit about my professional experience. As I mentioned, I worked 36 years for Liberty Mutual Insurance Company in various management leadership roles, including managing an office here in the Warrenville, Illinois office with over 300 employees and $100 million budget. My last seven years with Liberty Mutual, I spent as an internal consultant, working with various groups and departments on strategic alignment, visions, mission statements, things like that, as well as helping them with problems or opportunities they may have, which may have been reducing expenses, increasing revenue, improving their customer service results. So a lot of those projects that I worked were multimillion-dollar projects that we, that we, that we aligned with those various groups. So that's a little bit of my, my professional career. I would say beyond that, it's just my, my passion and love for this town. I've been here for 21 years, it's home to us, we have no plans on leaving. As I mentioned, my children are moving here, my in-laws filed this year, we're here for the long haul, and I've seen a lot of growth in this town in the 21 years, a lot of improvements, and still see there's a lot of potential, and I'd love to be part of that.
Gary.
All right, so I already hinted at this a little bit, but I, I also have experience with, with large project management, so I'm a deputy of one of the projects at Fermilab, sorry, which has about $30 million budget. My department's not as big, it's only about 30 people, but we have, you know, about a $5 million budget that we have to deal with. And I think, although I don't have a background in, in government, I think so much of it is actually just learning to deal with people, so it doesn't matter what, what organization, you, you learn the structure, but really, it's learning to, to deal with people, and so I think I have a lot of experience with that, so. Pardon me.
As I mentioned, I spent about 20 years in public education, working obviously in a governmental entity. My last decade or so in public education was as a district-level administrator in a large district, so again, looking at large project management, facilities planning, you know, budgets well into the millions of dollars. And so doing large-scale, long-term planning is something that I have a lot of experience with, also dealing with, with the public. You know, obviously, having worked in school districts through COVID, a lot of conflicting opinions, a lot of participation at board meetings, a lot of people, you know, at an escalated level, so a lot of experience having to deal with different opinions and different approaches of people in the public, and having to be in a decision-making capability that people are going to want to discuss with you. So there's that aspect. I also, as my work with the Historic Preservation in the last few years, our commission in the last few years, have really had an opportunity to dig into some of the projects and growth and new businesses and things that are happening within the historic district specifically, but really been able to, to, to talk to people who are bringing in their businesses and their ideas and want to make changes with, you know, in the historic district, and being able to maintain the character and the sense of place with Batavia while also supporting growth and the things in this town that make it someplace people want to be. So I absolutely love living here, I also have no plans to leave anytime soon. I've, I've enjoyed being here, my kids love it here, it's a great town, you know, I love the river, I love the downtown area, just being around here, great people, and yeah, thanks.
We'll use this one next, this is a good one. How will you balance your belief in what you think is best? what you think is best for Batavia versus what you hear from others, whether it's read on social media, or from city surveys, or from neighbors, constituents, to be? How would you balance that? And we will start off with Kirk.
As I mentioned, working for a Fortune 100 company and working with various departments and groups within that for so many years, you always have to balance that. I mean, it's listening, being a very good listener, understanding people's positions and their points of view, and then weighing that with your points of view as well, and always being open-minded to be able to, you know, because people change your minds, right? People have changed my mind on things. But yeah, if you're passionate about something, of course, you want to push it forward. But again, understanding the role that we have here, it's really about the city and the citizens here, and what's best for them. So again, just being a good listener and open-minded.
Robin.
I think it's important to be knowledgeable on the topics that you're voting on and that you're being asked to vote on as a representative of the citizens in your ward. So being knowledgeable and being able to, of course, listen to what people have to say, but also to be able to educate people on what the facts of the situation are. We do look on social media, and we get a little bit of information, or people don't always, you know, have all of the facts as they're forming their opinions. And so sometimes it is important to be able to have those back-and-forth conversations, to be able to help people to gain a better understanding of what the situation is and what exactly you're being called on to vote for, also keeping in mind, you know, what's best for the community. Everybody has their passions and their opinions, and, you know, you want to push the city forward in the direction that you think is best for everyone. But it is important to listen, to be educated, and to educate the citizens that you represent about what's at hand and what's at stake.
Carrie.
I think she said exactly what I wanted to say, which is facts, right? So a lot of the people who might be coming to you might not have the facts if they're not involved and are not seeing the charts and things. So I think a good part of that is trying to convey the information both ways. But it is good to listen to people, and especially when they're very passionate about something. But sometimes that passion can be misplaced if they don't have all the facts. So when I work with a lot of very opinionated scientists, and they're all very intelligent, so that's never the issue. The issue is sometimes they're not looking at the right facts. So it is good to be able to convince somebody, but also be convinced, be willing to listen to what other people are saying. So I think that's important.
My son is a state senator in Nevada, and after his first legislative session, I called him and I asked him, Ben, what surprised you the most? What was your biggest surprise about serving in the Senate? He said, Dad, the thing that really got to me is how difficult it was, how much time it took. Because I really made a commitment to myself and to the state that on any issue where there was controversy, I would try truly to understand all sides of the issue. And so I would bring people into my office and ask them to explain to me how they felt on something that was a controversy. And by the time I got done with that, I frequently found that I was changing my mind about an issue, too. So he taught me from that, that in any kind of a confrontation, if you can turn the confrontation into a conversation, you can usually all learn something and wind up with a solution. So it's not about what I feel. It's, I'm a servant to the constituency, but part of the service is to bring us all together and to discuss matters so we can come to conclusions. That's not a definitive answer, but it's a philosophy, I think.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to another question here that we have that, basically, it's what your vision would be for the remaining empty spaces along the Randall Road corridor, since that lies completely within the 7th Ward, and would be something that would be a big thing, that's especially as we do all the infill for the remaining parcels that are left and within the 7th Ward. What you think could happen to the open spaces that are left?
First person to say a video gaming mall wins.
Wow. Really? You had to bring that one into it. Okay. And we will start off with Carrie on this one.
I haven't really thought about trying to put something into the empty spaces on Randall. Are we talking about the empty buildings that used to be like the...
That would be one thing. The empty, there's open space. I mean, if you look at the map and what's been developed and what's still cornfields, what's still, you know, open space that's left out there? What do you think the 7th Ward lacks, or what, you know, Batavia lacks that could go into those spaces?
Yeah, I know that at one point, there was like a community fitness center put forward. I don't know if that would work over there or not, but I would like to see an indoor pool. I think that would be very good for Batavia. So maybe that's something that could be considered in that area. But I hadn't given that area as much thought, so.
We'll go to Kirk.
I've seen that area change a lot over the 21 years that I've been here. And I remember when I went to school at Aurora University, it was all cornfields driving down that area. So it's changed quite a bit. I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of problems that we have today, right, with all the empty retail space and so forth that's there. And just with the movement away from people from probably shopping in some of those areas, I think that is a problem. You've got the Sam's Building there that would be a great community center, maybe, I don't know. But it's a lot of, it's a lot of space, a lot of room. Right behind my house, I have some housing going in right now, too. So there's been a lot of change. There's been a lot of additions. And I'm not so sure that filling every open space is necessarily a good thing either. I mean, there's opportunities for more parks, more opportunities for walking paths, biking paths, things like that as well. So hopefully, those are things that would be considered, rather than just growth, although I understand the need for, of course, tax revenue as well.
Bob? Or Robin? Go ahead.
For Randall Road, I think there's a lot of opportunities, and I think that really starting to reimagine what these big facilities can be. So I think that obviously, we've moved away from an over-reliance on retail space. Obviously, people shop on the internet, so the need for massive retail spaces is not what it was. That's not, you know, unique to Batavia. But using those spaces more for things to do rather than things to buy is really a way to, I think, get, maintain the usefulness of those buildings, and also provide places for community members to have recreational opportunities. I also agree that not necessarily every space has to be filled, and we do also have to consider whatever changes, or, you know, looking at the zoning for those different areas would incorporate, you know, a mindfulness of the environmental impact that you have when you increase the use of space, or if you're adding additional housing, or whatever you're doing with that space. But ultimately, I don't see that level of retail space being needed at any point again. So really, looking at ways that we can use those for, to support our community, and with, again, recreationally, or even with, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Randall Road is an interesting asset for Batavia, and as we look forward to what's going to happen to it, we certainly wouldn't want to try to compete with downtown Batavia. It's a whole different area, different concept, different place. I live just off of it in the Windermere subdivision. And I think that one of the things that we have to be concerned about, or not concerned necessarily, but keep in mind, is that if Pulte Everett does build that bridge to extend Branson to Randall Road, that's going to bring, I think, significantly more traffic directly onto Randall Road, bypassing Fabian intersection. And that's going to provide some opportunities for more traffic and, there's also parking, which is at a premium, obviously, around here. And I think that there might be an opportunity for restaurants beyond the fast food area, although I know the mayor and I both like to meet at Culvers occasionally. So, you know, it's an area that I think has a lot of potential. It could go a lot of different ways. I think, as it is now, it's an asset to Batavia, and it'd be nice to be able to fill Sam's Club again, but other than that...
And I think we'll end, unless anybody else has any other questions, with what issue do you think is most important to Batavians as a whole right now? And what do you think that Batavia can do, the city can do, to help with that? Now, that's a big one. And we'll start with Robin. You all get a shot at it, so whether you get to go first or last, you still get to talk about it.
That's okay. I think that there are, all right, I don't want to cheat, but I think there's a couple when we're looking at the most important things. The things I hear people talk about the most, of course, is continuing to develop downtown. You know, we've got a lot of really good businesses down here, but then, you know, just when it seems like it's getting going, then you see another one that's gone out, and it's so disappointing, and you feel so, you know these people, and you've been rooting for them. And so it really, you know, that downtown is an ecosystem, business development, outdoor space, outdoor recreational space, things like that. How we're using it, I think, is a big issue for Batavia, and one that I hear most brought up when we're talking to people about what's going on in Batavia right now. Other than that, I would say, like everywhere, affordable housing is an issue as well. And so making sure that we have, doing whatever we can to support being able to have diversity in our housing stock, and making sure that we keep Batavia somewhere that, you know, a lot of people can come to and enjoy, like we all do.
We'll go to Kirk.
Very similar, I think, that people are talking about, at least my friends and those who I know, is really about the downtown area, and really, the focus on how do we make the river, I guess, more of a focus point for that, you know, what Geneva is. And they don't even focus on the riverfront. So I think it's an opportunity that we could do. But people really love the downtown, and my wife and I spend a lot of time down there, visiting the restaurants, the live music, things like that. But I think there's probably more of an opportunity, at least from a visual to the river, recreational for that. And I hear a lot of discussion around that. I think the other thing I hear about, too, and particularly maybe some of the voting recently for the schools and so forth, is just really, I mean, the economy, things the way they are right now, it's the tax burden, right? So people are very concerned about that. And just heard today that, you know, we're looking into the reserves rather than raising taxes. That's a concern for people, people right now, just inflation, things like that. Keeping taxes, at least to something reasonable for them, I think is a big concern for them right now.
Bob?
Well, I mean, obviously, the biggest issue that the people of Batavia are concerned about right now is how to get the Bulldogs over the top in 7A next year, right? You know, I don't really hear people talking about big issues facing Batavia, and that's, I think, because we're doing so well. Everybody's concerned about taxes. I think everybody's always concerned about their schools. But as I look at it, I see new housing going up. I see people moving in here. I see people wanting to move in here because it's such a great city. And I think that if you look at it from the other perspective, going back to the original question, what you hear from people and what do you believe yourself, I think that it's incumbent on leaders in the city of Batavia to prepare for growth, for population growth, and for how we're going to handle that. And a lot of that growth is probably going to come with kids, and that's going to be a challenge for the schools, too. And that's what I would say, and that's what I would try to encourage people to think about, and make it a major issue on their minds.
Carrie.
I will also say the riverfront is an issue. So I think it's already brought up in the downtown plan. I think it's called activating the riverfront, which is a great idea, because anywhere else I've gone that has a river, we're embracing it here. It looks like we're shunning it with the back of our buildings. So I think, especially on the west side, that would be very nice to bring that up. But I think, I think I have to disagree a little bit with our school age population booming. I haven't seen that, and I've only heard from the school district that our school age population is declining, which I think goes back to the affordable housing issue that we have here. So I think that's another issue. I'm not exactly sure how that's addressed on the city council. Somehow, we have to work with the school board, I guess, but, or the schools to deal with that, that issue for the property tax and things like that. So yeah, I mean, I do agree, there's not a huge, a huge issue in Batavia, which is one of the reasons why I love it. But I would say, yeah, fixing up the downtown river area is an interest of mine.
Does anybody else on the council have any other questions that we'd like to ask tonight? Sure. I was just about to say, if you want to come back up, and we'll just go back to the, we'll go to the original four, the way we had it set up. We'll start with Robin, and come back up, kind of give us a closing statement. And if you have a question, feel free to ask that.
I will just close with saying that I would be very committed to this position, and committed to being as knowledgeable as possible about the issues that are facing, that come up as they come up. I absolutely am a big believer in civic engagement and participation, and this is one way that I would like to extend my participation in the city of Batavia beyond the Historic Preservation Commission, and move into broader topics. So I think I have the experience and the commitment, and am willing to learn and participate. Thank you.
Bob?
Your corner, because I want to say, I really, really would like to do this. I'd really like to help move Batavia forward and work with all of you. And I eagerly and sincerely ask each of one of you to support me, vote for me. Thank you.
Kirk?
Yeah, very similar. I have a lot to give right now. And like I mentioned, been here in Batavia for a very long time. And we'd really like to find ways to give back and to help move it forward. Like I said, it's a great city right now, but there's always opportunity. And if I could be a part of this council, I definitely would give you a hundred percent.
Carrie.
Start with maybe a question or a statement. When I looked into the municipal code and saw, you know, how it was written up for what the duties were for the alderman, it just mentioned meetings Monday and the first and third Monday. But since this is such an important position to get information from the people in your ward, there's no requirement in there on how you're supposed to interface with the people in your district. So I'd be very interested in working on that and improving that communication, because I've lived in the fourth, and I've lived now in the seventh for a while. And I know it's the responsibility of the citizen to reach out to their representative, but I've never been reached out by any of my, you know, personally, by any of those representatives. So I would like to see if that communication can be improved. And I guess, so I guess my question there was, you know, what is the responsibility on the alderman's side to do that? Is that laid out, or is there some better definition there than attending meetings? I don't know. It just seemed like that needed a better definition than what was listed to me. So I don't know if anybody wants to address that.
Take a swing at it. I think it really, most of the time, I would say it's determined by personal feelings of the alderman. Do they want to reach out? Do they want to try to have coffees or an open house, or however they want to try to contact neighbors? If it wasn't a regular campaign, you'd be out walking, you know, get people together and trying to get a message out to somebody if you're, you know, running for an office. I will say, I think it's much harder I will say, I think it's much harder to come down here and the four of you might attest to this than it is to run a campaign. It's easy to run a campaign and go out and have things done and have somebody help you and do that, but to come down here, stand in front of, you know, 15 people and try to get a point across, to put your best foot forward, is not an easy thing to do. I've watched enough of these that I will say, I think it's easier to run a campaign than it is to, to come down here and go through this gauntlet. So I'll give you all credit for that. That's something that I think, you know, shows your commitment to what you think you would bring to this job.
I guess also in closing then I'll say that I do have a lot to learn about this position, but when I decide to learn something, I, I go all the way. When I first went into school, I decided I'm going to get my PhD and I, I went forward. So when I'm in, I'm all in, and this seems like a very exciting thing that I could be all in for, so.
That, I think we will retire to the, the little alderman's room and we'll go back and discuss this and vote on it, and then we'll come back out and let you know.
Do we have to do a vote for executive session?
Yes, we do have to have a vote. And it should really read that the decision on, the executive session is for personnel. I think that's what it, that, that would be the only way we'd get to go into executive session, the personnel for a decision.
I'll move to go into executive session for personnel.
Second. Motioned by Salsa, second by Uwe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. We will be right, we'll be back in a little bit.
With all those meetings, it'd be nice to split them up.
That's why there's 14 of us up here, so that we can share that stuff. And for the mayor to make the announcement.
Oh, yeah.
We have returned from executive session. Thank you for remembering Robert's rules.
And then we have to take a roll call for being back.
Come, come back into regular session, so now we need a roll call.
Lancy?
Really? How did we lose?
We lost one.
Okay, keep going, come back around to them.
Here. Pepper?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Salsa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayuzi?
Here.
My?
Here.
Uwe?
Here.
Saran? Vocal singer?
Here.
Lancy? Lancy? Shout.
Sorry, we did that to you.
That's enough to conduct business, and now I will defer to the mayor to make the announcement.
Batavia does this a little bit different than many other cities. In many other places, this becomes a moment of high politics where the mayor of the city or president, or community president comes in and says, well, this is the one I want. And many times they're their friend or there's some connection going on. And so I saw this happening in some other towns many, many years ago, and so I will take the credit with coming up with the idea that we should turn this decision over to the, the city council as a whole, and each one of you, as we've just done tonight, sits in on an interview and you listen to the candidates, and then based on that discussion, we go into the other room and we rate all, each one of you in your own mind rates each candidate, and the one you liked the best, you gave a one, two, and the one you liked the second, you gave a two, two, and third and fourth. And then we add up all the points that everybody got, and at the end of the day, the one that got the lowest number of points is the one that you, the members of the city council, made the decision should be appointed. So I think the person that comes on should feel good that, hey, I'm, I've been chosen by my fellow aldermen to be the one that sits here to represent it. So tonight we did the vote, and at the end of the day, you chose Robin Barrios to be the new alderman.
You know, we really want the rest of you to be involved, so don't go away, don't go too far. We've got other job openings, other things that, you know, we need input from people like you that want to be part of this. You know, every year that I ran unopposed, it, it kind of bothered me because you don't even get to go to the legal women voters and say, hey, I've been here for four years or eight years or whatever it's been, and say, these are the things that I think I've accomplished while I was there, these are the things I'd like to accomplish into the future. You don't even get the chance to say that to the public unless you go out and just talk to people. And, you know, that, that's a frustration of mine when we don't have people that want to come and be part of this. Over the past several years, we finally got, you know, some people where we'll have, you know, opposed and have actual, you know, a contest where we'll have discussion, and we only get better by that. You know, the, the more things that you get out in the open and you talk about when it comes to local government, it's so close to the people with how it affects them day in and day out by what you tax them for, what services you provide, what kind of police and fire protection you can provide. All those things come into play where it really is your best return, I think, as somebody that wants to serve on this, because none of us have a budget for ourselves like a Chicago alderman would. None of us have all the other things that get connected to that when so much can go wrong with it, that I think it really boils down to, you're not up here for any other reason than you want to be part of this and you want to be somebody that gives back to their community through this. So again, I thank all four of you for coming down and going through this and, you know, being out there, and there are things that we need help with. So, you know, the other ones of you that did not make this, you still need to stay involved, and I know you are involved, and we have other places we'd like to have you, you know, talk to us about being involved. All right? Thank you. And we'll get the operator's manual for you real soon, Robin. Once we, once we figure that out in February, yeah, once we figure that out in February, we'll have our retreat. And we will have your swearing in on Monday night on the fourth, so you will be here.
Yeah, we have to swear in at the very beginning.
You'll get to watch a little bit of it, and then you'll get to jump right into the seat and, and vote on all the stuff we talked about tonight.
Yeah, we have to bring you down and swear you in in front of everybody as far, so then you'll sit over here where Keenan Milner sat, so that's what'll be the thing.
Right. Thank you very much. And now we have one more thing on the item on the agenda tonight. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded by Uwe, seconded by Lehman. All those in favor?